This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
I might be called the May 8, 2025 regular meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:30 PM. Before I get started, I'd like to make a couple of comments. It was Nurses Day yesterday. I would just like to reach out to all the nurses. I have two daughters that are nurses. Thank you, what are your names? Becca and Reagan. For all you do and all the school nurses and everyone else. It's a tough job. We know it is. But we're very thankful for what you do. And this is also Thursday of Teachers' Week. And we always like to commend our teachers and the fantastic job they do. And the commitment they put in all year long. You can say they work nine months a year, eight months. They do not. They work 12 months a year. We know it. We appreciate it. And we look forward to what you're going to create for these young kids in the future. So with that, may I have a motion to approve the April 10, 2025 Board of Education regular meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to do student representative reports. First, we're going to start with Junior Rajaparagwa. Oh, okay. Sorry. So, the spotlight from the main man, Joe Salamini Jr., who has some announcements to make about colleges, do we not?
My college?
Are you not going to talk about mine? Let's talk about yours.
Penn State.
Well, our parents are very proud. We're all proud of you. We knew you could do it. Penn State's lucky to have you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Going to try out like I asked before for walk-on football there? No?
Definitely not.
What do you got, buddy?
Alright, so to start off, like you were saying, Teacher Appreciation Week. And high school teachers have had a number of nice events, including Coffee and Bagel Car that the principals brought around to all the school teachers. And during lunchtime, we've had a fundraiser from National Honor Society for a raffle that teachers can win a basket of school supplies and stuff like that. And then there's also been ice pops for them from the central office. Also, the senior class will meet the principals and their class advisors on Tuesday morning to review the senior end-of-year calendar and events. These include prom on Friday, May 16th, the senior outing on Monday, May 19th, and graduation on Thursday, June 5th. And lastly, Quinnipiac University has kindly invited us back again for our annual photos by the late tradition. Prom attendees and their families are invited to the QU North Haven campus from 5:30 to 6:30 on prom night to take photos on the beautiful campus as a kickoff to prom. Thank you, Quinnipiac.
Awesome. Joe, again, thanks for your dedication, showing up every month and doing what you do. Appreciate it. Just because you did two years, right?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think you had to get dragged there though when you were a junior, right? And I'm glad it worked out for you. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the public comment session of the evening. This is going to be anything that is a non-agenda item. If you have anything you'd like to talk about, please come up to the front. Just give me your name and yeah, come on up. Just give us your name and your address and yeah, is there a signing sheet there? Can you please sign in? Oh, you're passing her around. That's alright.
Good evening, members of the board.
Board.
I just want to thank you all for giving the opportunity to speak. This is actually my first time attending to one of these meetings.
Can you just state your name and your address?
Oh, my name is Kurshat Kavgaji, and I live on 103 Maple Avenue.
Thank you.
I have, so I have a little thing to discuss. So, my name is Kurshat again. I'm a North Haven resident and a parent of three children in the North Haven Public Schools. I'm here tonight, not only as a parent, but as someone speaking on behalf of many Muslim families in our community. Some of whom are here tonight, and there's many more who couldn't make it here. I'm asking the board to consider officially recognizing the two most important Islamic holidays. One is Eid al-Fitr and the other one is Eid al-Athab, as a date off in the school calendar. For Muslim families, these holidays are more than just special days. They are sacred, joyful, spiritual, and deeply rooted in our faith and tradition. Eid al-Fitr marks the end of Ramadan. Ramadan is a month of fasting, spirituality, reflection, and prayer. Eid al-Athab commemorates sacrifice, compassion, and devotion to God. On these days, our families gather in the early morning for communal prayers, shared meals, visit loud ones, and extend generosity to those in need. These are moments that shape our children's memories, identity, and sense of belonging. But right now, our children are faced with a difficult choice. Celebrate with their families or stay home, stay in their school, and not fall behind. No child should have to choose between their faith and their education. And no parent should have to see their child leave home in the morning on a sacred holiday just to avoid missing a lesson, missing their quiz, or their school project. It's a painful choice. And it's one that families in other faiths don't always have to do, have to make because their holidays are already recognized and respected. So what we are asking is not special treatment. We're asking for fairness, inclusion, and dignity. We want our children to feel like they belong not just in their homes, in their schools. Recognizing it as a holiday is a small but powerful step toward that. It sends a message that our children, our faith, and our traditions matter. So there are other towns in Connecticut like Amity Regional. I think there's a few schools that have been there. Hamden, New Haven, Orange, Milford, Bridgeport. There's many more that have already approved the days, like these days off. North Haven has an opportunity to join them. This is a chance to show literacy, compassion, and commitment to equity. This is a chance to teach all students that our schools celebrate diversity, not just in words, but in action. I truly believe that when we honor each other's traditions, we become stronger as a community. I hope you will consider this request, not just for my children. As you can see, there's many more children and many more who couldn't attend today because it was, I mean, we had a really short notice. So, but for all the children who deserve to celebrate their holidays without guilt, stress, or sacrifice. And I just want to thank you all for listening and thank you for all your service to our community.
Thank you. Before you continue though, I have a couple of questions. You mentioned two days, two different periods of time.
Yes.
Correct. Are they one-day holidays? Are they multiple-day holidays? Are they, how do you recognize those holidays in timeframe?
So each year, like let's say for both holidays, they're like, I think they're about like three months apart from each other. So every year Ramadan falls into like 10 days behind. So this year, let's say if you start like on April 1st, next year it will be like, it will come back like 10 days. It'll be like March 20 will be the first day, just to give you an example.
Is it a one-day holiday?
Yes, one day.
Okay, so, and what about the second?
The second one is Eid al-Athab, and that's also one day.
Okay. Are you proposing that we try to accommodate both days off? One of those days off is, is one more traditional than the other? I don't know. Forget my ignorance. Are you looking for both? Are you looking for one? What do you?
We're looking for both.
It's like Christmas and Easter. It's like Christmas and Easter for you. It's for us to...
Check the holidays.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. I understand they are. And I'm not trying to dismiss it anyway. Like I said, forget my ignorance. I'm just trying to understand. You mentioned two. I don't know, because I know Ramadan is a stretch of days. So I didn't know if these were one day or multiple days.
Yeah, it's one day for each.
It's one day for each. Okay. Okay. If I'm not mistaken, if I'm not mistaken, I believe one of these holidays now is recognized as a special day where there is no new learning. Absentee is not held against anyone who celebrates this day to come in. It is not technically off-schedule. It's on-schedule. I know that there are times when, I believe, correctly if I'm wrong, sometimes this holiday falls outside of the school year, at least one of them, correct?
So it's based, sorry.
It's okay.
But it's based on the lunar calendar. So that's why it just changes.
Yeah, it's a, it's a...
We cannot predict.
A rotating holiday.
Eventually, yeah. It may, you know, fall during the winter break because, you know, it changes every year, as you said, based on the lunar calendar. So, but we can't predict that, that it might in the near future.
Okay, so that's a year-to-year?
Yeah.
Variation, yeah.
Okay, so I have to look at that year-to-year again. Okay, so both are recognized? Okay, so as it stands right now, both are recognized. So if you want to have your children stay home with the family, they don't get penalized for taking the day off. There are no tests, no quizzes, no new learning, so they don't have that pressure of falling behind in assignment or test-taking or anything like that. That's where we are right now. The calendar for next year has already been approved, and these holidays have not been a part of it. I'll get with you. I promise you. I promise you. So right now, next year's calendar is already done. I would say that, you know, we can reconsider this going into 26, 27? 26, 27.
Sure.
And I think that's fair. And that we would, that we would always take, will always take time to consider these kind of requests because you know they're important. And, you know, like you said, there shouldn't be a major separation of family and education on these days. It's important for the family to be together. So, you know, the best I can say is right now we will remain the way it is, and we will look at it for 26, 27 school year.
And there should also be no major school events on any of the days that are like no proms, no...
Right.
The only thing we can't control is the athletic calendar because that's not in our control, but nothing else should be scheduled on any of the special observance days. That's how we had proposed that to them.
Right, so as we stated, we're trying to do our best to give it recognition and make sure you have, you know, it's guilt-free recognition, not to worry about missing it. And then again, we'll look at it as we move forward.
So, so are we saying like, so next year, yes, the agenda has already been approved.
Correct.
So there's a calendar, but moving forward, which is 2026 and 27?
So next year in, let's see, it's May now. Should you, yeah, I was going to say March. So March of next year will be addressing that calendar.
Okay.
So when that rolls around, this will be on that agenda to discuss.
Okay, so should we...
I promise. I promise.
Should we continue to discuss this like in the upcoming month and maybe like next?
You are free to come here any and every month if you like. This is open comment for anyone in the town to come in and say anything they like. I, we as board never tell anybody, no, that's off limits. We don't talk about that. We don't talk about this. Unless it comes to personal issue, which we can't. Other than that, it's an open, open time. You can talk about anything. So you are free to come here at any time to talk about that. I have no problem with that at all.
So no decision will be made until like next?
March of, uh, next year.
Okay.
March of next year. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I get, can I get this woman first, please? I'll ask she after you come.
I'm so sorry.
Don't be sorry. What are you sorry about? Just say, you don't have to come. Just put your name and address.
My name is Iftihan Adar, and I live in 12th Press Court in North Haven.
Okay.
I have three kids in Green Acres.
Okay. At some point, just sign that. At some point. You don't have to work your way up here now. What can I do for you?
So it's the same issue, but I said, can you do like amendment for the calendar? Not like not waiting until another year, you know? Now we have Eid coming soon. Okay, this one is too close. But next year, like we have another two Eid. One of them will come in March. And the other one, like two, 70 days in between.
Yeah, right now, I would say, you know, I would say, we usually don't open up the calendar. Calendar gets set up, and now they've already gotten into setting up everything for the school year for next year. So that's, I will get to, I promise. I will get to everybody who wants to speak, I promise you. So I would say, generally speaking, that that calendar is pretty solid for next year already.
So do we have to come next year too and do the same?
I would, like I was just mentioning, the first speaker. You can come here anytime you like. Any meeting we have, you can come here.
Yeah, I know. But now we, now we came, but now we have to wait another...
It's already in the minutes, so it would already be on for discussion come March for that, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, everybody.
I also have letters, which I didn't bring today, but I'll bring it to the next.
Or you can just send them to the superintendent.
Okay.
You can do that, and he'll make sure that we get copies of everything.
We have about, I think, 100 letters that we collected from the community members.
Yeah, get them to him, and then I'm sure we'll read through the 100, and then we'll disperse out of March to the rest of the committee. On the blue, in the blue. Ladies first, sorry.
First, I'm really thankful for this opportunity. My name is Mina. I am a mother for a student. His name is Yahya Hamza. He's a senior.
And where do you live?
I live in Hill, North Haven, and Avalon Heaven Drive.
Okay, thank you.
The thing is just I want to bring up to your attention, maybe this will ease how to put these two days on the calendar. If the Board of Education can connect with the mosques, because usually it's the mosques who make the announcement of the Ramadan.
Are they determined? They make determination?
Yeah, for them. It's according to our Muslim calendar, so maybe...
It would be easier, I don't mean to stress you, it would be easier if you had a representative contact us instead of us trying to chase that down. That way, we know the information that we're getting is factual.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is that fair enough?
Makes sense.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, no problem.
So to add to this, usually these days will fall into the weekends too, which will not be a very long time.
Exactly.
And as she mentioned, it's going to come in the next March. And March when are we meeting? Like March 1st week, 2nd week, so we can understand?
We, yes, it's always the 2nd Thursday. I don't know what day.
It's the 3rd.
It's the 3rd in March because of parent conferences.
But the Board of Ed schedule gets posted, not to cut it.
And the board is approving them tonight.
And the dates for the whole year get posted, so I think we approve all the meeting minutes for, all the meeting dates for next year, and they'll be posted, and the agendas get posted, so you can see what's coming up.
So as a representative cannot make, cannot find the exact date about this, usually we find out weeks ago, I mean, how the lunar calendar is going to be, a week or 10 days ago. So that will be something that, you know, to add it there, or if we have a bracket, like on these specific days, if it can come.
It is, it is listed. We can, yeah, we can copy that, right?
They're up on the website.
Oh, this is on the website?
As soon as it's approved tonight.
Oh, as soon as, okay, so as soon as this is approved tonight, it'll be up on the website tomorrow. These are the dates for the year. But if you ever had doubt, call the superintendent and just ask. Superintendent's office will be able to answer that question pretty quickly. So if you call them first of the month, you'll always be before the meeting happens, and you'll know if it's, you know, 7th or 10th or whatever the day happens to be, and you'll be able to make sure.
Whatever you expect from us as a community, and we can have a representative that will communicate with you about this. Is there any question that we can answer regarding this holiday, so we are here?
I myself don't. Let me bring it to the board. Do the board have any questions for this young man about the holiday or anything else?
Can I?
Yeah.
It's not a question. I just want to say thank you for coming out.
Of course.
Tonight. Like, I really appreciate you coming and talking to us, and I love seeing the kids. This is, it's helpful for us to know and understand what the community is looking for, and just thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Anybody else?
With a quick look at the calendar, I believe Eid, believe it or not, is on March 19th next year, which is supposed to be our Board of Ed meeting. Is that right?
No, 19th?
Those proposed dates, because, yeah, they're 19th, so they're a week. So my suggestion would be then to come in February.
I thought you said the 3rd.
Come in February. You don't only have to come in February, though.
No, not...
No, no. Again, you're welcome. Every, every meeting that we have, the public is welcome to come and speak on anything. So just make sure you wear that.
So February is the, sorry.
Hi, my name is Laida. I live at Hartford Turnpike in North Haven.
Okay.
So I wanted to ask, so do you recommend us, the representative from our community, starting joining the meetings starting from next January 2025, 2026? So that, do we have the estimate, when does the actual final list goes out? That you guys post for the next following calendar? Because I know you already said that, you know, we can't do it for this coming year from 2025 to 2026. But we want to make sure that hopefully, you know, after every consideration, we are hoping that, you know, for the year of 2026 to 2027, it will be included in the holiday calendar. So when does that get finalized for February?
March of 20...
We vote in April.
Yeah, we vote in April, but March is...
When we discuss it.
They discuss it in March. They get it together, and it comes up to vote in April.
Okay.
The April meeting. But again, please attend any and every meeting you'd like to come to and speak your piece and keep it in the forefront if that's how you'd like to do it. If we just do it that way, that's fine.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Does anybody else like to be there?
Did you have another question?
Well, what's her? I'm sorry.
Did you have another question?
Do you have another one? Or is that answered?
I was going to ask the same question as she asked, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody, anybody else on that particular issue?
No.
Okay.
Sure.
One thing from the back.
Sorry.
Ready?
The second issue or?
Yeah, no. No, no.
No, one last thing.
You go.
Is there anything we can do to convince like you to like...
Well, it's your, it's the show. It's the show of...
What can we do?
It's the show of support that you have right here that shows us how important it is for you. You know, the problem like anything else, it's you have so many days and so many holidays, and just to try to make it work so that we're not getting out of school, you know, the 20th of June. We're trying to keep the years as tight as we can because we're still trying to figure out, if you have zero snow days, you have 10 snow days. It's a difficult task, and I don't interview the members who are on that committee. So it's obvious we know it's important too. It's just a matter of making everything kind of work. And that's really the consideration that they have. They have, it has to function within the confines of a regularish school year, regularish school year, just to kind of make it so it doesn't go super long. But yes, what you've done tonight is fantastic, and just keep having representation show up if you like and keep it in the forefront, like I said.
Thank you.
That's what I would suggest.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else on this particular issue? Okay, your role.
Sure. David Cohen, 55, Tocany. The first thing I want to say is I really appreciate what you're, what you're bringing up and the community coming out. Jewish, and I grew up in a predominantly Christian area. And so when I was a kid, the very first time we had Yom Kippur off, which is our big holiday, was a big deal. And so being seen by a community means an enormous amount for kids and for parents and for everybody in the community to be seen by your community. So I was in your shoes as a kid, and finally, one day, we didn't have to go to school on our biggest holiday, and that meant a lot to me as a kid. So I really appreciate you saying that. I've been through it. And thank you for coming out and keep coming out. The way to make action happen is to keep showing up. So keep showing up. Yeah, no, I appreciate you all. The other thing I want to say about Teachers' Week, I have an admission against interest right now. I showed up and the coffee car was there last year. I didn't realize it was for the teachers, and I got a coffee.
And you made it out alive. That's a good for you.
And I was walking through school with the coffee at the middle school.
They told us about that.
Yeah. Really sorry about that. And then lastly, I, you know, really important budget vote is coming up on May 20th. I just want to make sure that we put a plug in for getting out and voting for the budget. Wherever you stand on the budget, there's a lot of really valid perspectives out there about this year's budget. It's going to be a tax increase, as everybody knows. But just the more voices we have coming to the polls, the better, right? May the best ideas prevail, and that's really what this is all about. So there's a lot of really interesting things being written and being talked about, and your meetings are excellent to get informed about what's happening. And on May 12th, next week, next Monday night, there's another town meeting to hear about the budget again. So please come out and vote. And you should all show up and vote, whatever direction you feel like voting, but make sure you get to the polls and vote. Really, really important that every parent, every person, every community member comes out and votes. And the more voices we have, the more we will feel that our voice was reflected in that vote. All right? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Anybody else like to speak today? One of them.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nancy Barrett, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about two different issues. I'll try to be very brief. The first issue is about the announcement that was made in the high school bulletin about announcing that there would be no summer school this year. So when it was first released in the bulletin, the bulletin said, "Students, please be aware that due to budget issues, we do not expect to have summer school this summer." And so I'd like to ask this board, was this a decision that was made by this board? Was there an action, meaning a vote of this board?
I give you a quick answer.
Sure.
Mr. Dall, I misspoke.
Okay.
That's really the answer.
So that was, that was the week of April 28th. So now we have this week's bulletin, and it says, "Students, please be aware that we do not expect to have summer school this summer." So they've taken out the "due to budgetary constraints," but it still says no summer school. So I'm trying to understand what is behind this? And is this just the high school? Is it the middle school as well? Is it, is it, is it every single school will not have a summer school program this summer?
Just give me one second.
Sure, of course.
Just those pieces of...
So ESI mandated by the state of Connecticut. That's for our students with special education. That summer school program will be held.
Of course.
The summer program that we started coming out of COVID that is intervention and enrichment-based will not be held this summer. Really, the reason that, the budget is unknown at this point, and we have just non-tenured 60 teachers in this district. And to run a program with the potential of not having teachers come back to us next year is not a very wise fiscal move and not beneficial to our teachers overall. So we decided to halt that program for the summer.
I think we had the error on the side of safety.
So would the money that would pay for this summer school program come from the current fiscal year budget or next year's?
Next year's.
It is next year's.
In addition to that, I also want to share a Title I funding was cut in half that also helps fund that program.
But I just, if I could just, to the high school piece, so the program that we typically offer at the high school level, we had a small enrichment for middle and high students who are interested in STEM, the only one that we are adding participation for 612. But we, our larger program, there's credit redemption. So students who perhaps did not pass a course for some reason, which then you need a certain number of courses and credits in order to graduate. We have been thinking differently about... We have been thinking differently about that this year and offering some after-school modules so that students can try to recover those credits during the course they're already in, because we're finding that we don't have as much success necessarily with students wanting to come in the summer, then they have jobs and such. So there has been ongoing, anyone who may need to make up that credit in core areas, we don't offer them in, like, every elective and we never have, have been ongoing after school, and that has been offered throughout the course of this year. And our six twelve SRBI coordinator has been working really diligently to offer them with, as we check each marking period, to kind of see who's where in terms of being able to pass or not offer those opportunities.
Do you have an idea as to how many students would be impacted by not having the summer school program this year?
Well, I can tell you that everybody at the high school who is in risk of not being successful in a course, right? Not passing a course, has been offered the opportunity, again, in core areas, not elective areas, to attend some of the after-school credit redemption opportunities. Now, we can't make them go, of course.
Right.
So, you know, just like in summer school, we may offer it, they may select not to come. That's their choice. But we have been offering it, and from my list from the high school, the interventionists, the guidance department, they have been reaching out and working with those students and their families around this opportunity.
Okay. And when was all of this announced to the students? Because I'm just concerned that these students are finding out in April that there isn't going to be a summer school program, and then all of a sudden, uh-oh, what do they do?
So we actually have been offering that after-school credit redemption opportunity throughout the course of the year. We had started it last year because we do find that the summer is not necessarily as well-attended as we would like.
Okay.
Back many years when I first came to the district, there was a program where families paid for students to go for the credit redemption. And other districts came, our students went to other districts. We also have a platform, that's an online learning platform that the state gives us free of charge that students and their guidance counselors can work on too. It's, you know, self-generated. You have to be motivated to want to do that. But that is also an option that guidance counselors are talking to students about as well.
And are there any students that you're aware of that are still falling through the cracks that either aren't participating in this redemption program or doing it and not being successful, and they'll still need some options this summer?
So in all honesty, I don't know all the students or work with them directly. What I can tell you is that Mrs. Patajkowski, who is our SRBI coordinator, works diligently. We have a grad task force at the high school. We have like a seat watch list, we have a failure watch list. We have, like, truly all of these systems in place. And this is from my end, just pointing out, I'm not doing it. But I know that they are very involved with these students and their families and really doing everything that they can to help students to be successful and to make sure that they graduate on time if they so desire and that they make up those credits. So, you know, this is, this piece of the secondary credit redemption and makeup is very tricky, because sometimes students have multiple failures. So even if a summer program doesn't help that, we need to really get in and try to figure out how to help them fix the seat time issues, the assignments. There's, there's a lot of variations to it. It's not a one-size-fits-all for everyone, if I'm being honest.
Yeah, no, no, no. And again, I was more concerned about the timing of this announcement in April. But also that, that students would not have other options. And so I'm glad to hear that there are lots of options. And there's just one more thing related to this, and this is, I have both the twenty twenty four, twenty five program of studies and the twenty five, twenty six program of studies. And within this, it lists options for graduation requirements not met. And it says enroll in summer school and pass the requirement. And then it also says options for course makeup. And it says a student may attend a recognized summer school. It is recommended that the student attend the North Haven summer school. And so that language is still in not only this year's program of studies, but also next year's. So you might want to change that. And so I'm glad to hear that there's these other programs, but when I saw this, I said, uh-oh, that, that.
And I can help to clarify the program of studies piece. Those were typically created in, end of January and February. I used to help create them. So I think that's why that information is in there. So it hasn't, once it gets published, it's published for the year, but that is something that we could take a look at.
Right. And again, since I'm on the Board of Finance, but I'm speaking here just as a member of the community, the Board of Education budget has not been cut. So I understand that you have to act in an abundance of caution. But I have, I don't remember the year in which cuts were made for the following year when no cuts have been made to the Board of Education budget. So it just seems to me that, that that is, is sending a message to the community that I, I don't entirely understand. And I think there's, you know, there's rumor mills out there that a decision was made to get the budget down to a more manageable number. Well, I don't, I'm not aware of that, and I sit on.
We don't, we don't discuss rumor mills because.
No, no, no. I understand, but I'm just telling you that, that this is how rumor mills start. When, when the principal of the high school is saying, for budgetary reasons, we're cutting.
Again, people misspeak, right?
I understand.
You've never misspoken? Everybody misspeaks.
I absolutely have.
Okay. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying. I think that's all that needs to be said about that.
Okay. And my other issue is just related to Mr. Cirque's presentation back at the Budget Public Hearing on April seventh. So Patrick, I'm just a little bit confused, because on one of your slides, you presented the North Haven PPE, or Per People Expenditure, is nineteen thousand two sixty-six. But I have here the District Profile and Performance Report. I'm sure you've all seen this. It's put out by the Connecticut State Department of Education. And it's for school year twenty-three, twenty-four, because of course, there's a lag in the data. And on this report, it says that the PPE is nineteen thousand six seventy-six. So.
There are more than one number out there? There is. I can send you what the, the paperwork we use. I, I understand where you're getting that from.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I do not have on me the list. It's in my budget information, but I can get that to you, the information.
Again, if, if this is.
I know, I know where you're pulling it from. I understand.
They're putting out there as a report, and it's a, it's a pretty extensive report. I'm just trying to ship, because then I went back a full year. I thought, well, maybe it's just an average year. It's the same thing last year.
Yep.
Last year, your report, it was eighteen five nine five nine, and it was actually nineteen five four three, so.
According to that.
Yes, according to this report. So, and again, they calculate the number and hand it to you, right?
They don't hand it to us. I have to go look for it, but.
Right, right, right. But ultimately, the number is provided to you as opposed to you calculating.
Number is provided.
So, anyway.
I'll make sure that I, I share with the other.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else like to speak? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to thank everybody for showing up. May I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Board of Education meeting dates?
I make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Moving on to Aces' report.
All right, Aces. Hi, we had a meeting this afternoon. They're going through some changes with their leadership program. They're making revisions to the twenty-five, twenty-six academic program. Their report came to court for the academic standings for their students, and most of the students are at above grade levels, so they were happy with that.
Can we please just kind of keep it down a little bit? We still have meeting proceedings going on. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can we?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for showing up. Sorry, Marty. Why don't you give him one minute? There's a lot of, a lot of people trying to move around, so. Thank you. We'll stack those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Marty. Please.
Okay, program, I should ask for clarification. They're going through a number of program changes. Some of them to meet the state goals and others just ones that they want to make. They said their students are performing at or above grade level, which is good for them. They're developing a behavioral services program. They have contracts out to help develop it for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And that is going to incorporate AI into the services. So they're looking for new technicians. As far as their building projects is concerned, ECA is still tied up with historical district problems, and they're hoping to solve that. Basset Road is currently about seventy percent complete, and we're going to get a walkthrough probably in July to see what the building looks like. And I'll keep everybody informed on that. And then Head Start came up as a, as a major issue. And if I may, with the board's listening consent, this is what they went through. And somebody made a timeline from the day of election and Donald Trump's presidential inauguration. And it just goes something like this. On January twenty-seventh, the Office of O M B issued a cease and desist order on all funding for Head Start. The next day, a federal judge issued a restraining order. On February second, two hundred pages of Head Start information was removed from all federal websites. On March twenty-first, they were told that grants would only be issued as long as they conformed with the new regulations on D E I. On April first, the federal government closed six regional offices, including all of the ones in New England and sent it to Pennsylvania. There was a notice on April tenth that there was going to be a zero budget for Head Start. And on April seventeenth, the federal government announced that the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget was being eliminated. And this is what they've been putting up with.
Any questions for Marty? Anybody? Curriculum instruction and planning.
Short and sweet. We met earlier this evening. There was a new club proposal at North Haven High School for a STEM club, and that proposal was, or that club was approved.
Any questions for Joe? Finance and operation.
Thank you, Ron. We met tonight, and the budget freeze remains in place. We are still running hot on several budget line items, and I want to just spend a couple minutes talking about why we're running hot on them. Special education transportation is one of those items. And this is not really something that is easily anticipatable. I think folks know this is a volatile line item. We are welcoming, as a district, to kiddos with special needs, and we're glad that they're here. But it does, sometimes it, it can be a volatile line item. It's not easily anticipatable, and that's why we like to have healthy reserves. I always say that Joe is like the king of reserves, because we want to save for a rainy day, and that's why we like to have healthy reserves. Professional and technical services also support special education kiddos. These are like RBTs who we contract in from Apex. I want to just say something about this, too. It's similarly volatile for how many kiddos come into the district at any given point in time. But I want to just make the point that having kids come into district and attend the RISE program is beneficial in two ways. One, it keeps our kiddos in their home district. And two, it saves the district hundreds of thousands of dollars. So while this line item is over, this is still a considerably more responsible way of saving the taxpayers' dollars than the alternative. It's a true win-win. And the third major area is electricity. I think everybody was probably pretty surprised by the public benefits charge that was added to bills recently. So this was another unanticipable cost. And again, why we like to have reserves. Just a couple quick things to address a recent Board of Finance meeting. Our teacher line item is only at sixty-five point nine percent, though we are roughly eighty-three percent through the year. So I'm going to say this again. You cannot distribute teacher salary evenly over twelve months, right? So teachers work, they don't usually work over the summer. They work very hard for the rest of the year. It's almost like they put in the hours to work a full twelve months. But you can't distribute it evenly across twelve months, because our fiscal year ends June thirtieth, which is part of the reason why we want to end our calendar, our, our school calendar year by the twentieth, because you have to have spent all your money by June thirtieth. The teachers who elect to get a paycheck throughout the year get their July and August paychecks from the prior fiscal year's budget. So you'll start to see that sixty-five percent grow really quickly over the next few weeks. We also have gotten questions on why things are encumbered, why there's still money in the encumbered line while the actual account line is negative for things like special education, transportation, electricity, and professional and technical services. Encumbrances reflect what was planned to be spent. And as these line items have seen unanticipated costs, we are, two things can be true. We can have several dollars that are encumbered for these lines while projecting a significant overage. And this is another reason why it's a really bad idea to look at Board of Education budgets in an annual silo. We're constrained, and we have to spend our money every year. But for planning purposes, it makes a lot of sense for us to look at what's happening this year and whether or not we're running hot and make adjustments for the upcoming fiscal year. So I actually think that that is probably a standard best practice. I'm going to just encourage everybody to vote on May twentieth. And just let everybody know that our wonderful PTAs are putting on a popsicles-at-the-polls event, where the PTAs will be handing out popsicles to kids who come with voting adults on the North Haven green. Our next meeting will be dictated by the results of the referendum. And that's all I've got.
Anybody have any questions for me? No? Okay. North Haven Education Foundation.
They will hold their meeting next Wednesday.
Okay, that was short. May I have a motion to repeal policy five-one-three-one-point-nine-one-one, bullying prevention and intervention, and replace it with policy number five-one-three-one-point-nine-one-one, Connecticut School Climate Policy?
I'll make a motion.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. I should ask for discussion. Anybody, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Good. So moved. May I have a motion to approve revised policy five-one-four-five-point-five-one, policy regarding Title Nine of the Education Amendments of nineteen seventy-two, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, Happy Teachers Week. Thank you for everything that you do for our students, our families, and our community. And on that note, I wanted to share something that I just found out from the state of Connecticut earlier this week. They released on EdSite, which is where the, the C S D releases a lot of their, their data, teacher attrition rates. And for twenty-three, twenty-four, the state of Connecticut, they reported that ninety-two point four percent of teachers stayed teaching in the classrooms in Connecticut. And in North Haven, ninety-four point five percent of our teachers stayed in the district and in the classroom at twenty-three, twenty-four. So we're very thankful for our teachers and the fact that they chose North Haven, in which the district they'd like to teach in. We're going to dig into this a little bit more this summer. I kind of, it's interesting data. So if we find out any more around it, I would certainly share it with the board. Just an update around the elementary school audit. We're meeting regularly with the folks from M P Planning. A couple weeks ago, Ron and the Town Finance Director, Rich Monaco, attended the meeting. They are going to be active members of the group moving forward, and actually, Joe will be joining us as well. And we're taking some, some very slow steps, because we're learning a lot about this process on the condition of our schools and the next steps. So I believe that they will be here probably at the start of next school year in the first couple of months to share some additional information with the board. But if you have any questions around that, please share those questions with me, and I can definitely share them with the planning group. And just a reminder, for the last days of school, last day of school will be Tuesday, June tenth. June 10th. This again accounts for one snow day that we had back in February. The North Haven High School senior graduation is scheduled for Thursday, June 5th. The middle school promotion for eighth graders is scheduled for Wednesday, June 4th. And the last four days of school, June 5th, June 6th, June 9th, and June 10th, all will be early dismissal days for students. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Patrick? All good? Assistant Superintendent's report.
Okay. This evening, I too want to thank our amazing teachers and our staff and the principals. There's not a day that I'm not in one, two, three buildings. And every day I leave just amazed at the dynamic teaching and more importantly, the care and kindness and just selfishness that the teachers pour into our students and our schools. So we are truly grateful for everyone's commitment and their hard work. It does not go unnoticed. Currently, we're in the process of collecting our end of year data and beginning to do some comparisons, especially with our literacy data, with our book rooms implementation. I'm just curious to see how that's going to translate. And you know, we've talked a lot about keeping the eye ready tools so that we have something that stays the same in all of this. So I will keep updating the board as we go through that. We're just starting to get our spring data and we're digging into it. We're also continuing with our state mandated SBACK testing. We're almost finished with our next generation science testing. Our SAT testing is done at the high school and we will be finishing SBACK up in the next couple of weeks. And lastly, I had applied for a competitive grant and they're getting fewer and fewer as they're being put out. But there was one that came out to provide additional support to our English learners and we were granted $15,000, which we can use next year to support some of our multilingual learners. And an interesting piece for us to consider is that many of our students who are also acquiring English are duly identified and also receiving special education services. So this will allow us to be a little, to provide even more supports for those students. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? No?
I just want to say thank you for continuing to look for all the grants.
I feel like if they're out there, we have to try. You know, you never know if you're going to get it or not, but it's worth the writing and the time and hopes that we get it, so.
I know that you're making miracles over here and you're moving everything around because summer school may or may not be happening, is not happening at this point. You're writing grants. I just appreciate you, Melinda.
Absolutely.
And really that we have used some of our Title I grants in order to fund those programs throughout the course of the year. And I don't know if you had remembered, but in March, we did talk about not being able to run our traditional summer programs, particularly the intervention and the enrichment at the elementary level. But what we will do if funds are available, provide some after-school pockets of things during the school year next year for students.
Awesome. Anthony, I usually go to you now, just take it with Christian, to talk about Chartwells first.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guess what? You're up.
I'm up. And I'm going to skip around a little bit and actually move my cafeteria and food service portion of my report right up to the front. As I've shared with the Board of Education, in actuality, the first time in 10 years, we actually had to go out as mandated by the Connecticut State Department to bid for our food service management contract. We are actually required every five years. We had the extension fortunately with Chartwells during, they literally were gearing up for a bid process as the COVID lockdown happened last time. So we were able to stay on with them and obviously we've continued to highlight all the great things they do for us. This process is driven by the state, very meticulous, multiple steps, many things that have to be submitted, people have to be trained. And so we embarked on this process beginning in January with myself going to the training, learning how to submit the RFP to the state, having it sent back multiple times, firing it back. But one of the things the state did say is because we were on the ball so quickly, they actually had a new platform that they opened up for submission. Our contact there, Andy Paul, was basically said, you guys, North Haven, are helping to work out the kinks with the uploads and how we're getting this done. So it's never easy to be the guinea pig. But with that being said, we got our RFP up and we had our mandatory pre-service, pre-bid conference where we did have four bidders attend, Chartwells being one of them, as well as Winston, Sedexo, and a food service management contract actually from New Jersey, EFS, I believe was the acronym for them. They came, they toured our facilities, as is part of that process. They're allowed to ask questions. And then April 11th was the last, at 11 o'clock bids were due. We had one bid submission, Chartwells. And part of it is we do have to reach out to the other bids, the folks that were there, how come you didn't bid? And the two primary reasons, one, a lot of these companies are trying to maintain the contracts they already have. These companies spend a lot of time, effort, quite frankly, money, putting together a bid package. They can run anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 for a company to put a bid in play. And so first, they saw what was being offered already and they said, you've got a great program going on there. And so we were just going to hold on to our bids. Chartwells did not take this lightly. They submitted a very competitive bid package. Over April break for three hours, our team of scorers had to go through the entire bid package. And so this evening, I am incredibly happy to introduce both Mr. Jamie Davis, who is the area director from Chartwells, and an individual I talk with on a weekly basis, Mr. Sal Rizzo, our food service director. I am recommending to the Board of Education this evening that we award them the bid for next year and the right to continue to extend that bid over the next four years for the service of food service management contract from the North Haven Public School System.
So do we have any questions for Christian regarding that? Is it fair if a board member has maybe a question or two for you?
Absolutely, yeah. No, we just want to say how much we appreciate the partnership and look forward to continuing it. But yeah, no, any questions for myself or?
I'd like to speak for myself and I know the board has been very happy with the way you conduct your business throughout your contract. The kids are happy with the meals. They're, they're good, solid meals that are edible.
Yeah.
You're talking about a guy who worked in jail for 20 years. I've seen a lot of things. And you guys are not that. You're the opposite, which is really good. So, and I know the kids enjoy stuff and you give a lot of different, you know, options and things and that's really good, right down to vegetarian, correct?
Absolutely. Sal and his team run a great program here.
Does anybody here have any questions for?
Of course, we better deal with the cost.
We did. You know, part of it is not only, so I bear the burden of sometimes bringing some very interesting financial news to everyone. One of the areas that is always very successful is the cafeteria services. The cafeteria service account is bound by the state. Our account currently, because of the success of the program and the reimbursements, does hold the level of three months of operating cost, meaning so that we're always three months in the coffers, if you will, being able to meet the services, plus a surplus that we can use within our kitchen. Part of the process and looking at the financials is not only the increase that they have to account for, for their staff, but they also present an estimate, I think it was $15,000, that they would make over that, that would go in, back into that account. So they're not only accounting for their fees, but they're also accounting for the additional funds that will be coming back to that account that we can access to improve kitchen and cafeteria services in our school.
Anybody else?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So, thank you, gentlemen. My daughter is vegetarian and she made a request to expand the vegetarian options at the high school and that was met. But if parents have questions for the Chartwells team, how do they go about contacting you? Do they go through the district or do they go?
On the website, our direct numbers on there are my email address and Anne Marie, who's our financial and HR rep, her email is on there.
That's great.
Yeah, oh yeah. We're all, me and Anne Marie are right out of the high school. So if they need to call the high school and ask for us, we have direct line email addresses.
And anyone that I've spoken to that has like had an opportunity to contact Chartwells has been thrilled with the response, so I'm going to just say thank you for the partnership too.
Thank you. Yeah, we encourage all students, parents, families to reach out with any special dietary needs, questions on the menu. If a student feels comfortable approaching one of our food service workers or managers, to kind of walk them through, especially at the high school, there's so many different options. And someone that is vegetarian might not realize, you know, they can go to the burrito station, they can get it with just beans and rice. They don't have to get the other protein. So anything we can do to, you know, kind of customize or specialize it for the student, we enjoy the opportunity.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah.
Talking about how.
I was just like, wow, there's a burrito station?
Yeah. You'd be amazed at what high schools look like these days, especially North Haven. It's certainly one of the best, but it has much more of like a college or university feel to it.
Awesome. Rivals the same.
Anybody else? All right, with that, may I have a motion to award food service management contract to Chartwells for the 2025, 2026 school year with the opportunity to renew this contract for the following four subsequent years of '26, '27, '27, '28, '28, '29, and '29, '30?
Make a motion?
Second? Any discussion?
Do we get a water bottle every year?
Yeah. Very good. All right. Let's vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you so, thank you so much, fellows. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Anthony, we're going to go right to the Director of Student Services.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take the opportunity to sincerely thank the board for their continued support and dedication to our community and our students. The commitment makes it possible for our students to thrive, achieve high levels of success, and benefit from unique learning opportunities. I'm especially grateful for the board's support of the RISE program. This has been an incredibly successful year thanks to Mrs. D'Angelo, the RISE teachers, support staff, paraeducators who have worked with us to adapt and pivot as we not only moved the program to Clintonville, but also welcomed 10 additional students at the beginning of the school year. As we begin to plan for next year, we know that our numbers will be increasing by at least 12 new students and we're very excited about that and looking forward to it as well. And they are coming directly from our preschool. This will mean we'll need to continue to support this program with financial and human capital. The summer will be a wonderful time for us to plan and continue to build structures to ensure all students' needs are being met. Additionally, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to train our paraeducators and help them work towards becoming registered behavior technicians. And also, very fun, the approval of the Maui program, if you will, at both the high school and the middle school. So thank you. Each day, we witness remarkable growth and positive change, shaping students into productive, engaged learners as part of the North Haven community. The feedback we receive from parents about the excitement and the changes they see in their students is astronomical and it is so rewarding to hear those stories and have those conversations. Most importantly, it's wonderful that they're part of our home community. The Student Services Department looks forward to continuing this important work next school year and I hope everyone has a restful summer. And Happy Teacher Appreciation Week.
Does anybody have any questions for Anthony?
Those really cool balloons that you have at your seat. They are fingerprints.
Of all the students.
Isn't it great?
Yeah, it's really cool.
They made our day at the beginning of the weekend.
That was very sweet.
Really sweet.
Thanks, Anthony.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief Officer, you also?
Good evening, everyone. And certainly to echo the statements of Art of It Said, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week, Happy Nurses Day or Week as well. I'm going to steal a statement from Superintendent Cirque that we've utilized in some of our presentations is that we're, many things we're not always rich in, but we are rich in talent and heart. And I just want to continue to reiterate that, particularly when it comes to our teachers and educators. So thank you. As Amanda Gabriel highlighted in her report from our finance committee, this continues to be a very challenging fiscal year. And as I've spoken to in multiple reports before, the areas that continue to be the drivers of some difficult fiscal matters that we're addressing are our special education, transportation, and tuition lines. We are looking for two more excess cost payments, one this month and one in June, to help with those lines, but they will be over budget by the end of the year. In addition, professional and technical services, and what is important to articulate that Ms. Gabriel had said, while the district does have various professional and technical services, part of that line are professional and technical services primarily from the Apex Group that help to meet the mandated legal special education needs for our students, our RBTs and DCBA's. These can be incredibly volatile, particularly not only for out of district, but when we receive in district students that we're trying to meet the needs of in our specialized programs. Electric primarily are united and illuminating, which is, we've all seen it, we've been talking about it since our first finance committee meeting, the public benefit fees were unanticipated this year. We do believe that with our budget freeze, we will be able to alleviate that and that will not be an overage that we cannot cover with balance transfers from other areas at this time. I did want to note that if you're looking into the actual MUNIS report, on the available budget line on the Board of Ed Capital Improvement Fund, there was an entry error in the MUNIS system, the available balance there is $61,134. What I want to be very clear on is we continue to watch this budget very, very closely, making sure we're in active communication with the board through the board chairman, as well as on the town side, to see where we're going to end up in the year and to be very clear and transparent into what may be the next possible steps in that regard. Not in a position to give a clear projection, but we're looking at the end of this month to be really clear on where we're going to land. Any questions at this time on that? Due to the timing of when we needed to get the report out to all of you, which actually fell on May 1st, when you received your packet, in regards to the reserve funds that we have to reconcile with the town, those are held on the town, so we have to request the reports from them to create our reports. Our medical and dental continues to run extremely hot. This has been a very challenging claim year and so we continue to eye that quite closely. And, excuse me, as well as our workman's comp reserve as well. We have had some injuries, some internal for, quite frankly, in-service to students and so we need to make sure that we are not touching that account and making sure we're watching that very closely as well. We should be transparent with the Board of Education with the switchover of auditors with the town. We've been in communication with the final audit with the town for the 23, 24. They have clarified that there was no over expenditures from last year. However, they did require access to our non-lapsing fund to make balance transfers. We are still in communication with them to have clarity as to what those look like. They are working with us to bring clarity to that. So that is what I can respond to at that time. Any questions there? We saw food services, transportation with DATCO, and our preparation for them taking over services continues to run well. We are in weekly communication with them. Christina, we call her Mac McKinnell, who is our location manager, she does work up here, has been a very steady influx of individuals coming up to meet with her in regards to setting up to take over that transportation on July 1. Anthony and I have been in communication with her regarding our ESY program routing and that is just about already complete for the summer, as well as looking at the amount of vehicles that would be required and making sure that stays in the projected budget that we requested. And they are well on track to what is called their base of their structured routing for the start of school next year. So that's why they look at our current routing based on student addresses and then they start to turn over and say, okay, are there improvements? Are some of these routes really the most efficient? And they again, look to maintain within our budgetary constraints to do what they can with that routing. Hiring for new drivers will take place in the month of June due to the 30-day window of when you can hire and when they have to officially start. If you hire earlier than that, then that 30-day window falls and they have to go through the process again. Any questions on transportation? Finally, I would just like to present and accept or request a donation. This is one that we've received almost annually now. This is from our Global Partners LP, Partnership with ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program. They've nominated North Haven Middle School to be the recipient of a $500 donation. These grants are given yearly to selected schools to use towards science, technology, engineering, or mathematics and STEM programming. If approved, these funds would be under the direction of Building Administration in collaboration with the district's science coordinator.
I'm going to make the motion right now. May I have a motion to approve a donation of $500 from the ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program to be used towards science, technology, engineering, or math. Spend programming at North Haven Middle School. You got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. May I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report, including the recommended transfers?
I'll make a motion?
Second?
Very good.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, we've come to second public comment portion of this. Okay, we've come to second public comment portion of this evening. If anybody has anything they'd like to say about an agenda item for this, for this evening, please say it, say your piece. Mike, got anything?
Hi.
Hi. How are you? How you feeling? You good?
I'm good.
Good. All right, everybody else is all set? Okay. All right. May I have a motion to enter into executive session and invite Superintendent Patrick Stark to be present?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. May I have a motion to approve the extension of superintendent's contract through June 30th, 2028?
Make a motion? Second.
Second, okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. May I have a motion to adjourn the May 8, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of Education?
Make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting won't be until the second weekend of?
August.
August.
Oh, this is the last one.